All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the March 24th, 2025 School Board Meeting to Order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sauk and Fox and Dakota Peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Keith Van Zilke.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lao.
Here.
Lindsay Nead.
Here.
Maggie Smith here.
All right, with seven other seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved?
Chris is moved.
Second.
Kadija has second?
Maggie.
Maggie has second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. All right, each year, the School District of Holman invites local lawmakers to attend a board meeting to provide an update on legislation impacting public education and share their thoughts. I would now like to welcome State Senator Brad Pfaff to the presenter's table.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and thank all of you for the invitation to be here. I am Brad Pfaff, and it is an honor to represent this school district, as well as many other public school districts in the La Crosse County, Southern Trumpa County, Western Monroe County, and Vernon County in the Wisconsin State Senate. Governor Tony Evers had his stated estate address earlier this year, and he followed that a few weeks later with a state budget address. And I am proud to say that he declared 2025 the Year of the Kid here in Wisconsin, emphasizing the state's dedication to supporting children and their families. I come before you as a proud graduate of public schools, and I strongly believe in our public schools, and I believe our public schools are the great equalizer. Not only do they provide our schoolchildren with opportunities for them to grow and be their better self, but also they are a tremendous economic driver, both in the short term as well as the long term in this state. But I will say this, Wisconsin's K through 12 public schools have not seen any inflationary increase in over a decade. And as a taxpayer, and as taxpayers throughout this state senate district and around the state, there's been numerous referendums in order for school districts, in order to continue to keep their lights on and to move forward. I do believe as a policymaker, we need to have a conversation as far as on tax reform. I've been a strong proponent of property tax relief, and I will continue to be that, continue to advocate for property tax relief, but I do believe that budgets are about priorities. And public education is a strong priority, a high priority for me and a high priority for the majority of people in this state. And I believe as we approach the 2025, 2027 biennial budget, and we have a two-year budget in the state of Wisconsin, the K through 12 public education needs to be front and center. So I thank you for the invitation to be here. I thank you for yourself running and serving on this school board. I'm just going to share with you some highlights from the state budget address that has been brought forward by the governor. Now, I will say the following things in regards to this. This is a proposal brought forward by the governor who's the executive in our state. We do have three branches of government in this state, and they're all equal. We have an executive branch led by the governor. We have a judicial branch led by our state Supreme Court, and we have a state legislative branch, which is made up of two legislative bodies, the Wisconsin State Assembly, which is 99 state representatives. Steve Doyle, my colleague, is a, represents this region in the state assembly, and then state senate. And there's 33 of us in the state senate. So, the governor made his budget address in February. The legislature has until the end of June of this year, June 30th to be exact, in order to enact that budget address. Our fiscal year in Wisconsin runs from July 1 to June 30th. Some of the important investments that the governor has proposed in his budget includes general and categorical aids, per pupil aid increase. There's also been a very important investment when it comes to special education funding. And in addition, there's an investment in school nutrition's healthy meals and healthy kids program, literacy and reading improvements, as well as sparsity aid increase for those districts that have high mileage and few students. In addition to that, we continue to address, need to address the issue of chronic absenteeism, and we obviously want to make sure that our students are workforce-ready. So those are the highlights of the budget address. But I will just say the following things, and then I do want to open it up for questions. First of all, I appreciate the fact that your school superintendent and members of your school board came and visited me and some of my colleagues in the state legislature recently as part of the Wisconsin Association of School Board. Thank you for visiting, thank you for your comments. Thank you for continuing to speak honestly about the needs for this particular district, as well as for the entire state. I will just say the following things, and that is, is that we in Wisconsin must increase the dollars that we put into special education funding. What has happened in this state is that approximately, and it varies on school district, but on average, essentially 32 cents out of the dollar, the state is reimbursing school districts when it comes to special education funding. Now, obviously, we want to make sure that every child that enters a school, walks through the door, has access to a high-quality education, but the money has to come from somewhere. And so what is happening in this district, like what's happening in many other districts, all other districts, is the funding is being transferred from one fund, considered a general fund, to a special education fund. And that obviously has ripple impacts throughout the school district. We also have to address the issue of mental health. And this is a topic that is not new, but since COVID, it is a topic that is front and center for all of us. So, I was proud to see within the most recent budget address by the governor, the $300 million investment for school-based mental health services, including ongoing per pupil payments and reimbursement for mental health professionals. Now, obviously, this is going to take more than just the per pupil payment. It's also going to talk about what we can do to have the reimbursement for mental health professionals that will be affiliated, may it be social workers or school counselors or psychologists or nurses, but also then for the general training that will take, that will be needed within our respective schools. As I mentioned, the school, the special education funding, I am proud that the governor has heard, and he has repeatedly in his budget addresses, heard the call from districts like Holman and other districts, the need for the increase in funding in special education. But I will say this, the rubber is literally hitting the road, and we can no longer continue to push this off any longer. We have to move towards 90% funding for special education. The governor's proposal gets us not to the 90, which we would like to see, but it meets us halfway, not at the 32, but at 60%, and so 60 cents on the dollar. As I mentioned, school nutrition is obviously so extremely important. The district here of Holman does a wonderful job. You and your leadership and the team that Mr. Gasper has when it comes to school nutrition is second to none. And quite frankly, I would encourage you to open that up to the public. I think you could do extremely well running a restaurant the way Mr. Gasper. His meals is just absolutely fantastic. But, you know, outside of that, I will say the following things. Is there, is a conversation that is taking place within the Capitol in regards to cell phones in schools? That is something that is, you know, always has my attention, and I am following that very closely. And then I just, I think that we have to continue to focus on workforce readiness. If we're going to continue to communicate and work with our taxpayers and demonstrate the excellent work that districts like Holman provide to the taxpayers, we always have to be cognizant of the need for, to demonstrate the workforce readiness that the graduates from Holman School District have. And so, you know, what more I and the legislature can do to make sure that career and technical education, that you are getting the support and the dollars that are needed for career and technical education opportunities for high school students, please let me know, because I stand ready to assist you with that. With that, Madam President, I'd be happy to take any questions from any board members.
All right, first of all, I guess I want to say thank you for coming. We really appreciate having you here, and we appreciate how well in tuned you are with education and education budget, and also meeting with us a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you.
I was going to just start off, I kind of have a statement that aligns really well with some of your opening comments, and I'll just kind of start us off. So the School District of Holman, as well as many other districts, are struggling to keep up with rising costs due to inflation, yet state funding has not kept pace. As a result, many districts are forced to go to referendum just to cover operational expenses, maintain staffing levels, and provide students with the quality education they deserve. As you know, referendums are not a sustainable solution. They create further inequities where some communities can pass referendums while others cannot, further widening the gap between well-funded and underfunded schools. The K through 12 education system in Wisconsin desperately needs an education budget that includes inflationary increases to state aid, ensuring that schools can plan for the future without relying on unpredictable referendums. You will see that tonight, the Holman School Board has a resolution on our agenda asking the Wisconsin State Legislature and the governor to enact policies that provide annual inflationary increases in per pupil funding to ensure financial stability for school districts. This will be shared with you if approved by our board at the next board meeting. I'm curious about your thoughts on this topic, which you've already mentioned some of those, and also is there anything more we can do to provide you, to provide to you, to help you advocate for inflationary increases in K through 12 schools?
Well, thank you very much, and I applaud you for bringing that resolution forward. You know, you are correct. We have, for the last decade, there has, K through 12 public schools have not seen, there has, the inflationary increase has been, it hasn't kept up. It has not kept up at all, and there has been, I will just be upfront with you, that we need to have, this state needs to have a conversation on the role of public education. And I think that your board, speaking for your school district, I think that that means an awful lot. And I'm glad that you're having this conversation, trying to push the legislature to have a, to recognize some of the decisions that have been made over the last 12 to 14 years when it comes to investments in public education. I think that it's, I think it's long overdue that as a state, that we focus on the funding of our public schools and recognize that going to, having districts go to referendum, while, you know, I, some of my colleagues will say it allows local taxpayers to make the decisions at the local level. What it also does is it can lead to inequities from district to district. And so, I will let you know that the discussion that takes place in the legislature is, some believe that the level of referendums that we're having in this state is what we should be having, because that allows districts at the local level to, and their taxpayers, the residents, to make that decision on what funding level for their schools. There are others, such as myself, that have been very clear with the fact that this leads to inequities. And I see that from various districts that I represent. And that is why I believe that we need to have, we need to have a broader conversation as a state legislature, and we need to recognize the fact that if we're going to, again, invest in our economy, invest in our children's long-term future, the best investment in that would be to continue to invest in our public schools. And that is why we cannot continue of investments that are less than inflationary, I'll say that. So I encourage you to bring that forward, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on it. But that's the debate, that really is the debate, Jennifer, is, is that what level will the state fund? And, and what, what can the legis, what would the legislature is, that is currently being led by the, by the Republican Party, what level will they fund public education versus having it go to referendum at the local level? And that's the debate we're having, so.
Thank you. Yeah, if there's anything else we can provide to you to help you fight that battle, let us know, please.
I continue to tell stories, continue to tell the stories, that's what's so very important.
Okay, any other questions?
I can follow up, I guess, on the budget question.
Yeah.
So, the governor's budget, there's a lot of great stuff in there. And I've also heard that, in all reality, based on whatever happens with the Supreme Court and line item veto power, we're likely starting from scratch with another budget being proposed and then trying to find some common ground between the two. Do you feel hopeful about any of the K-12 funding initiatives that you've mentioned, like school meals, special education, per pupil aid? Like, are there any where you're hearing some, like bipartisan chatter around support?
I think, thank you for that question. Yes, there is, there are two important elections taking place on Tuesday, April 1st, one for superintendent of schools, DPI, Department of Public Instruction, the other one for the state Supreme Court. But having said that, regardless of what happens with the statewide April elections, the Republican-led legislature will be rewriting this budget. And I, I will say this, the, while both, the Assembly and the Senate is led by the same political party, I do believe that, I do believe that the policymakers in both the Assembly and the Senate, they do come from different parts. While they have the same political party, they come from different parts of the state. So you see the Senate is much more rural and much more northern as far as the Joint Finance Committee members versus in the Assembly, which is more suburban and southeastern Wisconsin. So I would begin to look at different portions of this as far as recognizing that while it's maybe the same political parties in the majority, one house is more rural than the other. And I do believe that, I think the special education conversation is, has real relevance in all parts of the state, but I do believe within the Senate, there's some real conversations that can take place. I do believe the inequity of going to referendum versus not going to referendum in some parts of the state versus the other that have the capacity to go to referendum and get those passed. You know, those are things that you can be able to break out, and I would encourage you to do that. I, I, I know that, I will just say this, is that I do, there is not unanimity in the House and the, in the Assembly and in the Senate by the majority party when it comes to education. I just want you to know that. It is, it is very divided, very, very divided. And so, you know, I, I want you to make, just be aware of that. I do think that you need to continue to speak your fellow school board members, not just in this district, but in neighboring districts, and to learn from them, you know, what their legislators are saying and the approach that can be taken there. But I just, I don't want to leave the impression that, you know, it's just a, you know, there's unanimity within the Republican Party as far as how they're going to move forward when it comes to funding public schools. And so I am following it very closely. I can tell you, I do believe it's the special education funding is the issue in which people are paying very close attention. It's a very good question, and I would like to be as direct as I can with it, with that, but all I can tell you is, is that I do believe the decision-making in the Assembly is different than the decision-making in the Senate with the Republican Party on this topic.
All right, any other questions?
I have two.
Yes.
One, and then if somebody else wants to jump in, I can hold my second one till later. The first is, Act 20
Yeah.
has been in effect for almost two years now.
Yes, it has.
And though I think everybody up at this board table, and I would wager a bet that everybody in this room thinks that it is important to advance our literacy in this state and make sure that every child can read, it also costs money to implement brand-new programs, and that is something that has been held up in appropriations since this bill was enacted. Is there any movement on that funding getting to schools? And can you just maybe give us an update on what's going on with the Act 20?
It's a very good question.
Thank you.
And I do think, this is where I'll go back to what Maggie spoke about just a moment ago in regards to the statewide races. I do believe next week's state Supreme Court race will provide greater clarification on that. To make a long story short, it was $50 million, it passed in 2023. What happened as well is that, you know, there was a line item veto that the governor did within a state budget that was a per pupil increase that was, that would be at least 300 years or something like that. I don't have the specifics until 2435, I believe it was. And there is some questions from the majority party in regards to the legality of that. And so they are, there is a variety of different decisions that are being made as far as how to move forward. But yes, in the meantime, districts like Holman and others, you know, are continuing to do what you're doing with literacy, and you're not receiving the reimbursement, and that's wrong. And that is, that absolutely is wrong. And, you know, my advice is, would be to continue to put pressure upon the legislature to remove that money. And that's the other thing that's hard to clearly state here, but what has happened within the legislature is, is even when funding has been approved, you know, the Joint Finance Committee, which is composed of 16 members, eight from the Assembly and eight from the Senate, will not release the funding, and until they have, can have final sign-off. And there are some of us that believe that that is not proper, and that is not proper procedure. So, you know, I do think it's wrong that this money has not been released. You know, there is, it was, it was passed and supported on a bipartisan basis. The districts are doing their job, the school districts are doing their job, and you're not receiving the money. And I think it's, it's wrong. And I firmly believe that the majority party legislature needs to explain why this funding isn't out the door. But, you know, they're not releasing it, so it's a very good question, thank you.
I have, I actually have two others if we want to ping pong Kadija. So one, thank you for mentioning the bills related to school meals.
Yes.
As you mentioned, we have fantastic school meal programs.
Yes, they.
Unfortunately, there's a lot happening federally
Right.
understatement, and the Local Food for Schools Cooperative Agreement through the USDA was one of the programs that was terminated. So I kind of have the same question as my first one about, like, bipartisanship around healthy school meals for all. Do you feel like there's conversations happening there, knowing that, like, that federal funding that was really directed towards local purchasing from local growers is gone, and that that's impacting, frankly, schools around the state?
Yes, it is.
And then the growers they were working with? Any conversation around, like, healthy school meal incentives for buying local, something tied to covering the cost of school meals? Or do you feel like it's kind of going to split along party lines?
Well, it shouldn't split along party lines, but I'm afraid it will. First of all, it's a very good question. I'll be upfront with you, I've been really pushing hard on our farm groups statewide. Many of you know that I'm very proud of my rural roots, raised on a family dairy farm eight miles from here. My family's been farming since they came to this country in the mid-1800s. And I have really been pushing these agriculture groups, that they need to recognize and be part of this conversation. Because while we're talking about healthy meals here for schools, I mean, the similar conversations can take place when it comes to, you know, the WIC program and the SNAP program and many other food programs, that we need to make sure that we have this, this conversation. So I'm always optimistic that we can, we will try to get bipartisan support here. But the thing is, is that, you know, we need to remind, Congress needs to be reminded, as well as my colleagues in the legislature, they need to be reminded that the food that is grown here from our family farmers, you know, it's consumers in this area that, you know, are purchasing food, are eating food, that, you know, we need to, growers need to know the consumers that consume the food and the consumers that are purchasing and purchasing and consuming the food need to have a recognition and acknowledgement of the growers. And that connection is so very important. So I am continuing to push the growers and the large farm groups in this state to make sure that their voices are heard. And I will continue to do that, because we, silence, there's no place for silence when it comes to that issue or any of these other issues that we are learning about in Washington, DC.
I'll go if nobody, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There have been, and in my opinion, and I will say that this is my personal opinion and not necessarily reflective of the board as a whole, but an alarming number of bills that have come out of the Assembly and the Senate in this cycle that are related to the policing of trans children in particular. So in fact, two, I believe, of those, of the three that come to mind, were specifically targeted at mandating school boards to have policies around how to deal with issues related to trans kids. And one was about completely banning any access to gender-affirming care for anybody under the age of 18. Our school district serves trans kids, every school district in the state, whether they realize it or not, serves trans kids. And I was able to listen in on the Assembly floor session and was really moved by the gentle lady from the 96, Tara Johnson's maiden speech on the floor. And the thing that I took away from her- And the thing that I took away from her speech was this question of why? Because, uh, the reality of this is I understand that people are trying to figure out a way to move forward and figure out a way to include parents in, uh, the decisions and figure out a way for schools, um, to respond to, uh, the needs of trans kids and like the reality of these bills coming to the floor. In the way that they're being written is that trans kids are very much under attack. In fact, uh, being asked to sit in hearings where, uh, people who are openly anti-trans and vilifying them and, um, uh, erasing their existence are given the floor before they're able to speak. I think part of it is, you know, what, what does this, what do school districts do? Because our, our primary purpose is to serve students and their families. And when we see this kind of, um, and then there's the whole, uh, the whole understanding that a lot of times like these will go through the state, uh, the Assembly and the Senate. And then they'll be vetoed by the governor, but then that leaves school districts in kind of a limbo of like, what is actually the mandate? And, uh, what do we need to start making policy around? So how does the school district advocate for trans kids? How does the school district support trans kids and their families? And, um, is there any, uh, effort or has, has there been any consideration around, um, introducing legislation that protects trans students and trans individuals rather than demonizing, vilifying, attacking?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yes, you are correct. Last week, the Wisconsin State Assembly had a number of bills that was brought before. And, um, all of them did pass. All of them did largely on party line votes. I will say this, I do not believe that we should dehumanize anybody. I mean, I'll just lead with that. You know, I, uh, I will also say the following things is I do want decisions made at the local level. I do think that that is important, uh, that decisions are made at the local level. Obviously, you know, as a parent, I do believe there's a role, uh, as well there. But I also do believe that, um, there is, there's been an awful lot of politics. I will say that, that has been brought, uh, to this, uh, issue. And so, um, you know, I look forward to, I'd love to have further conversations, um, with, with you, uh, individually. But also, you know, as a, as a board, if there's thoughts or procedures or recommendations or suggestions that, uh, that you, you can provide me. I would very much like to hear and, and to learn. You know, I, uh, I will just say that the, uh, we just, we need to remember that we're, we're dealing with human beings. And, um, and I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, that, that conversation that is around that, this issue. We do recognize that we are, we're dealing with a fellow human being. And so I, but it is, I don't need to tell you that the, uh, the level of politics on this given issue is, uh, is at a, um, is at a peaked, peak level. Say that. Thank you for, for bringing it up and thank you for your comments in regards to Representative Johnson. She's working very hard. Thank you.
My, my last question, actually, uh, I'll first, I'll, I'll second what Kadisha said that and just share that. I think it's unfortunate that there are a small number of trans kids trying to live their most authentic lives. And so much energy at the state and national level is going into attacking these humans instead of solving the many other challenges that we could be working on. However, on the subject of, of home rule, local control, um, I have a question about Senate Bill twenty-nine, the one you mentioned about cell phones in schools.
Yes, yeah, go ahead. I'd love to hear it. I really would. I actually asked some school students that issue too, and you could imagine their response.
I have been tracking this bill very closely since its conception and I find it very perplexing. Again, my personal viewpoint.
Yeah, that's all right.
I, as a parent, as, as a board member, I think screen time is a problem. I think over reliance on screen time in schools can be a problem. And also, um, I know from my own research that over three quarters, it, far higher than that most likely of school districts in Wisconsin already have this policy with almost this exact same language. They already, it's almost verbatim. And so what I've read, I've read the LRB analysis, like what am I, what is the point of this bill? What am I missing?
I think that, I think that, I, thank you, Maggie, thank you for being, uh, you're not wrong. You're not wrong on it. I think all of us are trying to like wrap our hands or arms around, you know, what do we do here? And, uh, I hear you as far as what does the bill do that isn't already being done? And that's a very fair comment. And, uh, I can't tell you. I, I really cannot tell you that. I can tell you this, that, uh, you know, I've spoken with educators, you know, about what do we do? I've spoken with parents, I've spoken with students. And, um, you know, it's, you know, this, these phones, um, you know, they, they, yes, can provide tremendous opportunity. But boy, you know, it, I don't think any of us ever thought, um, that we would have the number of different, um, variety of different challenges that we see as a result of it, as a result of social media and as a result of just having a phone so ubiquitous and with us at all, at all times. So, um, you're not wrong, uh, that I don't think the bill provides, does, provides anything that isn't already being done, uh, by many districts. It's just that I will say this to, uh, um, on behalf of my fellow colleagues and, um, is that, you know, they've just heard from constituents and they're trying to figure out what to do. But yes, there's, there's nothing earth shattering there.
It, it seems like if they're trying to affect change, like if they're truly trying to reduce screen time in schools, they would have to remove this little blip that happens in between every block of instructional time.
That's correct.
I think that's what most people who complain about phones are getting at, like lunch and breaks and all those things, which may not be supported by students. Um, and maybe not even by all parents, but, uh, yeah, as I said, this, this bill, it frankly does absolutely nothing.
And I thank you for pointing that out. I, I appreciate you reading the Legislative Reference Bureau, um, background information on the bill too. That's good. Well done. Well done.
I had one quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've been following the story in Milwaukee about how there were required to add in the SROs back into their schools. And it was quite a conflict around who was going to pay for that.
That's right.
And I know, you know, school safety has been a topic that is on the minds of many. And I feel like it does cross party lines.
Yes, it does.
Um, when it comes to school shootings and whatnot. What conversations have you been part of? What are you, what sense are you getting? Is there talk of funding extra security measures in schools? I mean, I know we get reports from our Holman School District and the team does amazing work here, but it takes a lot of time, money, effort to do those things. So I'm just really curious.
It's a very good question, Bridgette. And, um, yeah, there are some legislators that are very focused on that. And there's bipartisan support, uh, from legislators in regards to having more, um, school resource officers within schools. What do I hear personally? Again, I, you know, I try and I speak to, I speak to all the districts and to get their, their perspectives. And it depends on whom I'm speaking with. And, um, but overall, I would say it's a positive experience. I think the relationship that, uh, that the SROs have within their schools, I hear generally positive. You know, the relationships that are being built, they're been positive. But, you know, I do hear from, you know, some students as well as parents. The, uh, concerns that they have in regards to that. Generally, overall, um, you know, Bridgette, I do support, uh, SROs. But again, this is something that I would want to have a conversation with you as a board and with your district leadership. And, um, you know, uh, going forward as far as with this district. I know this district has a relationship, a longstanding relationship and overall it's been positive. But, you know, going forward, I would like to, I would like to learn more. It's not unanimous. It's not unanimous within my own caucus, Democratic Caucus in regards to SROs and the role of SROs. And I will say this, to go back to a conversation that was brought up by President Jennifer earlier in regards to school funding. Education, uh, and the funding and the role of education is not, you know, with the, it's, it's not just binary, one political party versus the other. It's conversations within each political party. And, um, and the districts that each one of us represent and the unique needs of these districts. And so I can just speak from a personal level. You know, the constant efforts that I have within my own caucus to make sure that districts like Holman and rural districts like Verroca and Lafarge, that they are part of this conversation when it comes to school funding. And so it is, it isn't easy. But I will say, getting back to, again, the conversation on SROs, um, it's largely district by district, school district by school district. Member by member as far as legislator, um, in the relationship that they have with their schools and the SROs. But also the funding, getting back to President Jennifer's con, question early on. That really is a, um, a legislator by legislator conversation. And so, um, you know, I, it's not easy to answer that original question that you asked. But all I can say is this, is that, uh, funding has not kept up with inflation over the last decade and we can't continue on that pace going forward. So, um, that's where I stand as a, as a legislator.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the work that you do. And I, it, these are important issues, every issue that was brought up here. And, uh, you know, they're not easy to answer. But they're, they're important questions and I appreciate it. Kadisha, thank you for your questions. Maggie, thank you very much. I appreciate Bridgette, the work you do. And, uh, Jennifer, as always, keep, keep it going. I appreciate it. Thanks for the invitation and I look forward to seeing all of you around and don't be a stranger. Reach out to me, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have public participation this evening. So we're moving on to the district administrator's report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, well, first thank you to Senator Path for all of his time this evening. That was very informative and we had great questions by our, all of you board members, so thank you for that. Also, we recently had a high school musical presentation, the Spotlight on Broadway, and just wanted to thank all of our students for the great job and our, our staff that helped the students perform, um, that. And it was wonderful. And our high school nutrition services team, we talked a little bit about them this evening. They celebrated a taste of India earlier this month in that to give our students, um, a little taste of what, uh, that food is like in, in different cultures. So we thank them for going the extra step to really research and come up with some new recipes. And a lot of that's input from our students and what they would like to see and, and try. Um, we also had a Holman Middle School student, Nolan Stade, who competed in the state math counts competition after placing third at regionals. And he placed thirty-fifth out of a hundred and sixteen students competing at state. So just want to congratulate him. And lastly, April first is coming up very soon. And we, in the school district of Holman, we have Barb Wench and Kadisha Islam are the candidates running for two open board seats. And we also have an operational referendum on the ballot. So, um, if you want to learn more about our operational referendum, we do have one more community session, um, coming up on Thursday evening, the twenty-seventh, at six-thirty here in our boardroom. So we welcome anyone to please come and learn and ask questions, um, whatever you may have and to please go vote. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion. Item nine point one, Evergreen Elementary Principal Sarah Thompson will present highlights from the school. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
Good evening, everyone. All right, well, I'll start off by saying we had professional development today through the district and it was amazing. A lot of work went into it, so just a shout out to everyone who presented. And we are very fortunate at this district to be able to learn from so many people in-house. And today was in, um, a definite show of that and a great opportunity for our, our teachers and staff. So it was, it was fun to participate. I did some yoga. Got all relaxed. Almost wanted to take a nap after that, but it was really great to just have those different sessions for all of our staff. So for everybody who presented, thank you very much. Give a little update about Evergreen, the picture on the screen here, this is what it's, the before picture. It'll look very much different after, um, this summer, especially in the very front there when, um, the whole beginning or the whole front of the building, um, will get a new, uh, look as well. Um, our scorecard this year, we are focusing on ELA, um, Act Twenty, um, as we talked about earlier today. Um, we wanted to kind of parallel some of the work that we're going to be doing and then, um, support student growth in this area as well. Um, and we are measuring, um, how the target instruction in ELA through those interventions, um, help reduce the number of students on a reading plan for that. This spring, we will, we'll start actually testing for the spring, um, this week and then do some diagnostic testing after that too, just to kind of see where students fall in, um, at, um, at Evergreen. We are also collaborating with UWL dealing, during our early release time, um, along with the other elementary schools, um, to help integrate our learning into instruction. Brenda Guyer and I also have been working together to develop tasks based on the five steps, um, of anticipate, monitor, select, sequence and connect student strategies. Or posing purposeful questions in math, um, and how we can incorporate those into our lessons as well. At Evergreen, we are the home of the New Eddick Math Winners. We have some math fair participants, spelling bee champ, um, Mrs. Woodley was the teacher of the month, improv two experts, math leads, and we have so many more other great, um, things happening at Evergreen. Um, and a lot of celebration for our students with the wonderful things that they're doing as well. CKLA this year, we have a new pilot, or we are, we have, uh, CKLA Amplify this year. Um, and our teachers have been doing a lot of great things to kind of bring in, um, engaging activities for our students. We had royalty day, poetry day cafe, uh, tea party. We had the potato Olympics, Renaissance painting simulations. We had starburst rock cycle, cycles, graham cracker, plate tectonics, edible erosions. And then we also have the amazing race happening as well too. So here are a few pictures of some different things that have been highlighted in our, um, CKLA instruction as well. Another great thing, uh, Ms. Kret did an amazing job with our literacy night. Our theme was camping this year and we had families coming in, bring, um, blankets. We could see our, our campfire that we had there. And then at the very end, the, all the students and family members who came got to enjoy some smores as well too. So a shout out to Mrs. Kret. We have a lot of clubs kind of happening, um, in the fall, Mrs. Reed led an after-school running club. And it was really cool because we got to celebrate the end of the running club when they teamed up with the high school cross-country, um, team as well too, for their fun run at Evergreen. In the winter, Mrs. Shams and Mrs. Miracle led our Lego club, um, where the students built the biggest bases designed to withstand a dust storm on Mars. And that's where our custodians would find the biggest fan that we could find in order to see what was going to hold up or not. Kids had a great time after school and we will be starting, um, the French, um, students, um, will be coming to Evergreen in the spring, um, to do a French club as well too. So that starts in the spring as well. Our PTO is very generous, um, they fund many of our school field trips, so students do not have any cost to them. We, they were able to fund the magician Isaiah who visited, um, for one of our assemblies and talked about rising up to be a leader. And leaving the crowd, including myself, very amazed, I couldn't figure any of those tricks out. I was standing in the back with my mouth like, how did he, where did, what? Our PTO also fundraised, uh, fundraised our music program. They did a car wash sale and with, um, the Holman Area Foundation, along with the PTO fundraiser, our music program, um, is going to be able to purchase new instruments for our students. our music program is going to be able to purchase new instruments for our students. They had a little incentive of a pie in the face event as well, too, where if they donated past the amount, which they surpassed, the students could pick a teacher to pie in the face. So that was a little incentive for them as well, too. And then we are gearing up for our Evergreen Block Party, which will be held in May. And we're going to plan to invite our new 4K students, our new kindergarten students, all our new students coming as well, too, with the bond change. Fifth grade, we had the, the weekly lessons were led by our Dare Officer of the Year, Deputy Cody. And then we celebrated Read Across America with Dress Up Days, Bingo and a Find Someone Who game as well. But as I said kind of earlier before, the inside of our school is looking a lot different as well, too. So just some pictures of everything that's kind of been happening as well. You'll see here, this is the area where our new FIAID office will be, along with our new FIAID storage room. And then our kitchen staff is very excited with our new kitchen remodel and the addition that's being added as well, too. They are very excited about the freezer space that they will be getting now, too. So it's been kind of fun to see that transform as well. This is a picture as if you were looking into the old staff lounge. And over kind of by the Do Not Enter area, that's where our old bathrooms were. Completely gone for that piece of that. And they're working towards our new staff lounge there. This is the area where our new grand stairwell will be, which was a classroom on the bottom, and on the top it was part of our LMC. They're deciding the, trying to get the cement in there as well, too, to start being able to lay that groundwork so they can start building the steps in that area. This has actually started about two months before the projected timeline as well, too. Here, you'll see off to the left here, this is kind of where it's kind of gated off here, blocked off. On the other side, where the hole is, that'll eventually be like the new walk landing way as they come up the stairwell. And then down here where it says safe here, you're looking down into the new staff lounge, right there. We are very blessed at Evergreen. We have amazing custodians. And our buildings and ground staff has been an amazing team to work with to help anything that I need. I can send a quick text, and they're over there checking everything out to make sure that we are ready to have school and we can continue to provide a great instruction for our students. And working with Nexus for us has been very positive. They've been very mindful for our needs while continuing to make great progress within our school. And a big shout out to our staff because change and construction aren't always easy to navigate, but our students and staff has shown incredible patience, flexibility, and resilience through this process. Thank you.
Any questions for Sarah?
No questions, just because I have an up close, because I have an up close view at Evergreen, gratitude for everybody who goes a little above and beyond all the time to try to make things engaging and fun. I would have paid admission to watch the Potato Olympics also, just notes. It sounded hilarious.
It was good. It was fun to watch them parade around the school. They were very proud, yeah. Teachers had a lot of fun with that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item 9.2. Dr. Mueller will present a board legislative advocacy resolution in support of inflationary increases in per pupil funding.
Yeah, so this is a good night for this. As you heard from Senator Path, he mentioned how one of the most important things is the inflationary, to keep up with inflation, basically. And as he mentioned, since really 2000, there used to be legislation that school districts receive the inflationary increase as part of their aid. In 2009, after that, that legislation was not there anymore. And so since 2010, we have not received any inflationary increases, which in Holman, that equates just this one year. That equates to almost $12 million in one year. And I just think of what that could do for our students in that. So with that, so a resolution of this sort. This is something, as, as you had heard this evening, approaching is the 2527 biennial budget year. So it's especially important to continue to advocate as a school board and to help really meet the needs of our district and students. This topic of inflationary increase, this is something that is not only something that is talked about within the school district of Holman, but this is something that has been mentioned that we need to really, every district in the whole state of Wisconsin is having the same funding challenge in that around not having those inflationary increases to help with the district. So having a unified voice is really important so that the legislators in all of the different districts are getting that same message and really hearing what do, what is most important for districts to hear. So that is the purpose for this resolution here, that is to support inflationary increases in per pupil funding in Wisconsin. I will just basically, I usually don't read, but I think it's important when you have a resolution to go through this. So basically, public, where, this resolution, whereas public schools play a vital role in preparing students for success by providing high-quality education, essential resources, and a safe learning environment. And whereas the rising costs of operating schools, including expenses for salaries, instructional materials, transportation, and facility maintenance require sustainable and predictable funding. And whereas the current state funding formula does not adequately account for inflationary pressures, forcing many districts, including the school district of Holman, to rely on local referendums to meet basic operational needs. And whereas in the school district of Holman, general school revenue per pupil has lagged behind inflation since 2009 by approximately 3,200 per student. And whereas failure to adjust per pupil funding in line with inflation threatens the ability of the school district of Holman to retain high-quality educators, maintain class sizes, and provide critical academic and mental health support services for students. And whereas long-term underfunding of public education negatively impacts student outcomes, local economies, and the future workforce. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Holman Board of Education and the school district of Holman strongly urge the Wisconsin State Legislature and the governor to enact policies that provide annual inflationary increases in per pupil funding to ensure financial stability for the school district. And be it further resolved that the Holman Board of Education and the school district of Holman will actively advocate for this issue by engaging with elected officials and informing the public about the critical need of sustainable, for sustainable school funding. And finally, this is basically saying that we will provide a copy of this and send this to our legislatures and the Wisconsin Association of School Board to emphasize the importance of ensuring every student in Wisconsin has access to a well-funded, high-quality education. So with that, I think that speaks very clearly as to, we, as, as you heard Senator Path, there's many topics in the state budget of Governor Evers. And what we're hearing is it's important to keep a unified message abound, around what's most important, that will have the greatest impact across the state for all students in Wisconsin public schools. So with that, I guess, if there's anyone else who'd like to add that this is with the Holman School Board, or has questions?
Any questions?
Are there any other districts considering a similar resolution in the area? Or like in the state that you know of?
I know there's talk about that. And what it is, is they're really emphasizing that we keep our talking points unified around inflationary increases. Like you heard from Senator Path, they, there's a lot of bipartisan support around our special education funding at the Capitol, which is also, could have a very impactful, be impactful across to all school districts. What we learned is in the past, you know, we, we can share our stories with our legislators, and then when topics come up, they can speak to them. But if we start to say, in Holman, we would list like some dollars for mental health, then we've seen in the past where they grasp upon that, and what was shared is in the past, they would say, we doubled our funding towards mental health. Well, doubling it maybe went from 150 to 300 million. And when you have 421 school districts, it sounds like a lot, but it doesn't even have the impact that's needed. So this is what districts are unifying around because this is what we need to have sustainable funding in the state of Wisconsin.
So I think, just to make sure I'm hearing that right. So there's maybe like some strategy behind multiple districts having the same messaging? Okay. Because I had asked, or I guess been curious about like why we landed on this versus special education funding or any of the other mechanisms. So is the, is the sort of conversation that they want, they want to see like really strong support from districts on this one thing? Or is it beneficial to like also have a resolution related to special education funding? Because I, as Senator Path said, I have also heard that that one does have like some bipartisanship happening increasingly. And I don't know if, if it's beneficial to have both asks or if you feel like that weakens this one?
To tell you the truth, so I think this one is probably the most impactful across all districts, just with the impact it would have continuing over time. The special education funding, could you write a resolution just on that also? You could in that. I think what it is, is just to stick to very few talking points. And the talking points are inflationary increases, the, the re, the special education funding reimbursement. But there's specifics to that are really the two big main, main talking points to be really unified around. What we're hearing is up at the Capitol, there is a lot of conversation already happening and understanding around the special education funding. So that this would be more impactful, hearing more around this as to why this was chosen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Kadisha. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Bridgette.
Yeah, just an overall appreciation for the meeting tonight. It's always wonderful to have a legislator here to talk about our state budget issues and process. And then, you know, I really appreciated Sarah talking tonight about Evergreen. I think it's important for us to hear about our amazing schools and teachers and, and leadership that we have because we know at that elementary level, that's when kids get really excited about education. And that what, that's what makes us really successful. So I really appreciate that.
Okay, Barbara?
Thank you to Senator Path for taking the time to brief us tonight and for his continued support of our schools. Two weeks ago, Dr. Mueller, President Deek, and I attended the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Day at the Capitol, where we met with legislators. And as Brad discussed, we lobbied for increased funding for public education. And so that's always, it was just, it was a very educational day. It was very helpful to hear from both sides in the legislature of where they stand. And then Saturday, I attended the Project Live Adaptive Sports League fundraiser at Features, and it was just great to see the support from our community and the parents and the staff. So that was just a fun day.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to say it was, it's an honor to have a state senator here. And he shook my hand, so it's, you know, big deal. I know, it was so cool. But, and it's also great to know more about Evergreen since, you know, I went there. So it's great to like learn more and be like, whoa, that's cool. But then more for the high school stuff. So Student Council has a blood drive this Friday, March 28th. We have a winter assembly tomorrow, you know, base of stuff that happened in our winter season. Pre-ACT and ACT testing was last Wednesday. And then, you know, the musical stuff that you already talked about. And then seniors got caps and gowns last Friday, the 21st. And then midsemester is upon us.
Okay, Kadisha?
Yeah, I think I'll echo how grateful I am that our state senator made time to come and meet with us. I think I, I appreciate some of the insight that he gave. And I am hopeful that folks in the minority party who are pushing for some of this stuff have the opportunity to find some common ground and some bipartisanship in some of these issues because it, we desperately need that kind of collaboration. And I am, I'm excited that we are advancing some advocacy from the board table. I think that's something that is a first for me. I have also only been here for two years, so I'm sure it's happened in the past. But that's, that feels, that feels cool, that we get to extend some advocacy. And props to the folks who were able to go up to the Capitol for the WASB Day.
Okay, Chris?
Much of what has been said, so thank you to Senator Path for coming out this evening. It's always great to hear from our legislators. Also attended the Project Lives fundraising event. It was great to see all the support that they have. And it's a really fun event. I try to attend it every year. And then also this weekend, I had a chance to attend the Orchestra Pyramid Concert. We have one instructor that teaches both the middle school and the high school orchestra students. And it was impressive to see the growth that the kids had had since the winter concert. And to see the, the middle school kids get to play with the high school kids, it's pretty cool. To see just how many students we have involved in that, that form of arts. So it's very cool. And I look forward to doing it for many more years, so.
All right, Lindsay?
Also, thanks to Senator Path. And thank you also to everybody that has come tonight. I think I'd just give you guys big kudos. I know you guys work long days. So it's really nice to see people showing up and listening and just really nice to see you all. So thank you.
All right, Maggie?
Yeah, everything I was going to say has already been said. I, I feel grateful to have legislators in this area that show up and are often like out and about and, and come to board meetings and listen when we know they're really busy otherwise. Otherwise, nothing else from me.
Right. Yeah, I think we're very fortunate here at Holman that we have legislators that are, that support public education and are behind it. And I really appreciate Senator Path being here. I also want to thank Sarah for her presentation on Evergreen today. It's so fun to learn about the different elementary schools and what's going on there. And lastly, I did get the opportunity to attend the High School Spring Musical this year. And it's, we got, we got some really good singers in our high school, so it was, that was fun. All right, moving on to the upcoming board meeting schedule. On March 27th, there is the referendum community session at 6:30 here in the boardroom. On April 1st is our spring election. So please get on with your board. On April 2nd, there's a wellness committee meeting at 3:45 PM. And then on April 14th, there is a regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. And then April 28th is the board organizational meeting at 7:00 PM. So tonight, we are going to be moving into closed session. So I now ask Board Clerk Maggie Smith to read the motion to move us to closed session.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In this case, base wage negotiations. Roll call vote.
All right, Maggie has moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Chris has second to move to closed session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I ask Maggie Smith to take a roll call vote.
Bridget Todd Robbins?
Yes.
Barb Wench?
Yes.
Jennifer Deek?
Yes.
Kadisha Islam?
Yes.
Chris Lau?
Yes.
Lindsay Neid?
Yes.
Maggie Smith, yes.